definitive list and then we're gonna have to work off that list.
Okay, we're gonna go live in thirty seconds. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being with us this evening. I'm calling to order this committee of the whole of Wednesday, July twentieth to order. And I am going to recognize my colleagues and other members that are here with us this evening. First on my screen is our town clerk, Mr. Noel McGregor, Steve Mednick, the attorney for the charter revision, our corporation consul Howard Rifkin, consulman Josh Mixtum, consulwoman Tiana Hercules, consulwoman, our assistant majority leader Rosetti, members of Hartford Public Access and from my office, Mr. Adam Murphy. Thank you all for being here today. As I stated, we only have one item on the agenda, and that is the City of Hartford Charter Revision. Also connecting here with us is consulman James Sanchez. Welcome. And with that said, I am going to turn over the floor to Mr. Steve Mednick. Steve?
Thank you, Madam President. Members, it's great to see all of you and it's good to see Howard, who I've known for far longer than either of us would want to say over the years. What I want to do is kind of go through what I sent out earlier today was a substitute resolution. That is a, an evolving document. What I was trying to do is to include all of the comments that have come in since the charter has been placed before the council. A lot of them have come from the Corporation Council. Others have come from your colleague, John Gale. Some of them are my modifications. And what I've tried to do is try to plot them on the charter document so that you can see these comments and decide whether you want to send them back to the commission. A large number of the comments are what I would call errata or correction items. Some of them are, a few of them are substantial, but not, not substantial from a policy perspective, but can be fixed pretty easily. Most of them are, are, are the kind of things that can be, can be addressed without much debate by the Charter Commission and ultimately by you. Today, we received more substantive proposals from the mayor. Again, it's not a limitless enumeration. It's a pretty clear delineation of his perspective. And what I'm going to do, and I also received a document late this afternoon, two documents late this afternoon from the corp council that have kind of plotted the mayor's positions in the document. And my plan for tomorrow is to sit down and update the resolution. So you have a definitive list of all the items of, of all the items that have been presented to the council for consideration. And so, and I'll go through it in a minute, but let me explain where we are in the process. So where we are in the process is we're now considering ideas, recommendations to go back to the commission. If there were no recommendations, if there were no fixes that needed to be made, you could not provide recommendations, treat the document as a final document and actually vote on the document. And, and, but I don't think we're there. And so what you're doing now is drawing up a list of recommendations. Some of them are going to be substantive. The mayor's recommendations are all pretty substantive. And we will, you will have them on the list for consideration on Monday. As we go through on the chapters, you should also be thinking about, are there things that you think should be on the list? Keep in mind, there's a very, very short window of opportunity here. I think that most of the things the mayor has presented can be looked at and can be understood, digested, responded to and fixed one way or the other. It's ultimately five votes on the council that's going to make that determination. I think the Charter Commission, even operating in a short calendar of a couple of weeks can resolve most of these issues, but it's going to require a real effort to make sure there's communication when the items go to the Charter Commission and that Malley and her leadership team and, and the administration will be available to sit with the commission to try to work out a definitive response to all the issues that have been raised during this process. In my, my experience, very doable. It's just that everybody's going to have to pay attention to each other. Because when you get the final product, it's an up or down vote. There's no, it, it's a very unusual process for a legislative body that has, is used to having discretion. But when the document comes back to you, it's up or down. So if you don't like something, you can vote against it. And for the most part, we hope that voting one thing down won't be like a house of cards. There's very few provisions like that, which I think will have that impact. So we need to make sure that we bring back a document that, from the Charter Commission in about two or three weeks, that will be a very strong document that your body can support. So let me run through the document. Chapter one, there are a number of issues raised about definitions, some of them substantive. I believe the mayor, and I won't go into all the details because you don't have to resolve things tonight. I believe the mayor is going to be recommending the deletion of the definition of capital expenditure. I have already modified the definition of classified service. It's actually defined within the body of the document. So it refers to that. There's a minor change with regard to general statutes. It's an initial modification. So I don't want to get into all of these things. And so the, all the terms that we have in here are terms that we're going to be looking at. The most substantive is the deletion of capital expenditures. And you'll see in the mayor's arguments why that would be the case. The most substantive change is in the definition of majority vote of the council. The deputy corporation counsel appeared about two weeks ago and she and I both agreed that there's a very constricting definition in the body of the document that, that is at odds with the broad definition. And one of the things we're looking at, and I'll be working with her and with, with the corporation counsel to break down where a more robust standard for majority, a majority of the entire body becomes a significant and, and, and more important definition for adoption of ordinances, for example. There are some resolutions, I call them statutory resolutions, that are required by state law might be held to a higher standard, but the general resolution might simply be the simple majority that's in the definition of the document. So we're going to look at that again, not a difficult fix, but a fix that should be made. Those are the major issues in chapter one. Then in chapter two, we the, oh, I have a question and Howard and I have not talked about this, this question. I brought it up. We left it in the charter one more time. There's a line in the charter that is totally inconsistent with home rule law in Connecticut. And it says that the exercise, that there's a line in the charter that allows for the exercise of powers not expressly forbidden by the state constitution and general statutes in the charter. That's not the normal way home rule is looked at, but it's probably something that derives back to your special act. And so I, I do not want to recommend removal of it without talking to the corporation council. We won't do that now. But it's an issue that I raised because it's bothered me for twenty years in my charter revisions over the years. You don't want to give up a power, but I'm not sure. It would be an interesting court case if we decided to try to use that provision of the, of the charter, but I, I want to talk to the court council, see whether it's something that we should look at in this final stage of the process or not. In chapter three, we, they, they've, they've recommended that we review and modify the provision relating to the date of election for clarity. Again, I don't think that's a significant or, or complicated issue. Item five is a request to add the clause unless otherwise determined by ordinance in a section of the charter that, let me see if I can find it quickly, that deals with just see one second, four B two. Oh, that deals with the issue of serving in elective office if you're not, if you're not a, an elector of the city. So that's an issue that we would take a look at in that chapter. It's new language that basically codifies state law that you need to be a resident, an elector of the city in order to be eligible for nomination or election to elective office. In article four, the corp council has asked us to take a look at restrictions on holding office. It's a fairly restrictive provision. The commission did not look at this issue, was not raised with us when we asked for a bump in the road issues at the beginning of the process, but it's certainly something that could be looked at at this point, and we would be very interested in seeing how they want to address that issue. That has to do with restrictions for service on the council and
I'm sorry, Steve, it, it has to do with the definition of office of profit. And whether or not it is too restrictive and it's actually a term that you would find in British law. And I've, I've never been able to find use of it in US law, so.
It shows up in the nineteenth and eighteenth, eighteenth and nineteenth centuries. I've seen laws dealing with office of profit. But it's, it's obviously a relic of our special acts and we should probably look at it and see if we can fix that. I don't think it'll be a difficult fix to, to make. In section four C, there is a question about the clarity for the indefinite term provision in that office for the city clerk. That issue has been, has arisen. And in section four D, there are questions and the mayor has also raised issues about structuring the, the staff of the council. John Gale would like to call it council staff. It's currently listed legislative services staff. Again, that's nomenclature. And that's an issue that you need to take a look at. The mayor has raised it. I will look at what the mayor has said specifically and try to fix this section to make sure it adequately reflects what the mayor is looking for in the, the document. In article five, there's a request for a review of section five, four F. If I can find it quickly. To take a look at the status of the council president when acting as acting mayor. Howard, was that what, that was one of your issues, I think. Am I, am I correct on that?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think in the end, this is on temporary absence or disability. I think in the end, the mayor is comfortable with the way it reads.
All right, then, then we could probably, then we may take that out. I'll, I'll talk to Howard and see if, after going through this, he wants to take any others out, we'll, we'll remove.
There may, there may be one qual- qualification or clarification with respect to if the council president is acting mayor, he or she should not be voting as a member of the council.
I have provisions and charters that we've dealt with that. So why don't we leave it? We will figure out what it's about, but I just wanted to earmark it that it was raised by corporation council as an issue in that regard. In chapter six, there's an issue dealing with the fiduciary responsibilities of the treasurer. And there's an ordinance that the corp council has raised pertaining to the park trust fund. And we need to clarify the relationship between the treasurer's historic fiduciary obligations and that particular ordinance. I don't pretend to have an answer to that right now, but I will sit with Howard and we will figure it out and see if there needs to be an exception, if that was the intent of that particular ordinance. But remember, the charter is superior to the code of ordinances. So we may, unless there's, we may have to make the adjustments the other way, unless there's an estate or a trust or something that is responsible for the creation of that provision. So we need to take a look at that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. The the next change is in chapter seven, boards and commissions. I know the mayor has a number of questions on the heavy codification provisions of title seven, but I think the first question, oh, the, the questions come up with regard, there are two, two issues with regard to the to the planning commission, the city, the planning and zoning commission. One of them has to do with the functions of the office. And we simply, they have requested, and I think it's a perfectly reasonable request that we align the charter with title eight, that we don't create any unique powers or there are no unique powers, but we should simply have a reference to title eight, which is the title of the document that addresses, addresses the charter, the planning and zoning commission. And also there's some issues with the qualification that we've made some modifications of that that align with the current ordinances and standards already in the document as well. Item number twelve is later in the document, there is the, the inspector general raised an issue. The Charter Commission, actually one of its last meetings adopted language. It's that language, actually, I recommended it's language that they adopted to kind of codify the current structure of the police accountee review board and recall that the police county review board, I believe, is created by resolution. I don't think it's even established by ordinance at this point. I believe it's a resolution. And then also the civilian police review board and inspector general. The inspector general's concern, and it's a legitimate concern. If you lock in these entities, then you're kind of locked in for the next ten years arguably, or until you have charter revision, which may, which could be sooner. My general recommendation, if you want to make sure that there is an entity, is that you would say that there shall be a police commission or an entity similar to a police commission. There shall be a civilian review board. And then you leave the structure of those entities to you, the council and the mayor in real time, et cetera. So he wants to get rid of the specific references. And, and I think it's an issue that the commission could take a look at and get back to you on for final action. And there's language in the budget that was inadvertently placed there, inartfully placed there that seemed to eviscerate the role of the pension commission with regard to investments. It was meant to be a reporting function, but the language was much broader. We agree with the mayor and the corporation council that we should eliminate that language from the, from the budget process to make it clear that the pension commission is solely responsible for the operation of the pension fund. There were a couple of other comments in there that you'll see in the document that I didn't include in the resolution. The corp council had raised a question about, in the department section, there was a reference to the possibility unless, you know, that, how you deal with the appointment of department heads. And I think we had a clause unless subject to a collective bargaining agreement. And he properly pointed out that there are no department heads in Hartford, subject to collective bargaining agreements. You can leave the language or take it out. My recommendation is leave it in. There are cities and towns in the state that do have department heads that have been able to effectively collective, collectively bargain and are now classified employees. And so the language doesn't mandate it. It simply recognizes that it's a possibility. So the public knows that that is a possibility. I could go either way on it. We could fix it as an errata if, if Howard is, the corp council is insisting on deleting it. I have no quarrel with it. I just wanted to explain that that really was kind of a broad commentary that, that alerts the public to a fact that could in fact occur somewhere down the line. The other comment is there's a reference in the pension commission provision to a police commission. And he again properly pointed out that there is no police commission. But I will point out that that reference is a historic reference to a commission that existed and simply was referring to whatever, whatever historic powers they had, the pension commission continues to have. So in that case, I would argue that we should leave it in unless we know that the police commission had no powers that the pension commission would ever exercise in, in, for eternity. So those are the only other comments I had, but those are kind of where we are. Tomorrow I will plot the mayor's issues, which, some of which we've already dealt with. The council staff issue. The, there's some issues on boards and commission. I know that the mayor has raised the issue, and I think it's referred to briefly here about the structure of the various boards. The charter, his charter commission has actually recommended, as we talked to you a few weeks ago, about a change in the appointment authority. In some cases, the, the, the council gets up to two appointments, I think, to planning and zoning and one to several of the other commissions, including the alternates. I think there's some concern about that. The mayor's concerned about the creation of the applicant pool. We'll take a look at that. I will add that to the list as well. There's a number of budget related questions. I'll, I'll delineate what those are on the resolution that I update tomorrow. He has raised the question about setting the ADAC. That's the issue I just addressed, the pension commission's responsibilities for the ADAC. I've already made a reference change in the document, deleting that, that mistake in the, in the document or that misleading provision in the document. And some issues relating to tax rate assumptions. He also wants to add alternates, the Board of Assessment Appeals. There's a provision that he wants to have for some kind of negotiation process at the end of the budget process between the mayor and the council and the ability to include credit unions to receive payments to the city and a few others. The restriction we already addressed with the for-profit issue, office of profit issue. The residency of a corp council that will be raised as well. And the threshold for the procurement threshold, I don't think we've addressed that issue since the second charter I did for you in the early part of the century. So again, that was not an issue we addressed this time, but one that could easily be addressed in the last go around. So those are the issues. I hope, I hope I didn't go too quickly through them. And they're plotted in the document through the president. I'm happy to answer any questions and, and want to work with all of you to get this done in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Steve, for that update and clarification. I'm looking forward to actually looking at the new or revised updated red version tomorrow of the, of the charter revision. Consulman Mixtum followed by, by corporation. Well, let me have corporation first, consulman Mixtum and then all.
No, that's, that's okay. Let count
It's okay.
victim could go first. That's fine. All right. Okay. I, I just want to clarify, Steve, when the council sends back to the commission a series of issues to look at and consider. And then the commission has up to thirty days to act and respond and send back to the council a final document in their view. At that point, the council can only vote up or down on the entirety of the document, or can it vote chapter by chapter?
It can vote up or down in whole or in part. So it can accept it in whole, can reject it in whole, or it can accept parts and reject parts. It can't amend anything. So you can delete provisions that you're not pleased with, which would resurrect current provisions in the charter, but you can't amend them at that point.
Okay.
And that's why.
And, 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 and how small is a part?
You know, it's an interesting debate. If you can eliminate a word that characterizes something in the wrong way, I've been at, I've been at councils where that has been accepted. I'm reluctant to go down to a word or a clause. But, but if you can do that without losing the house of cards, basically, you could probably make a parliamentary ruling that that would be, that would not be inappropriate, that you could probably eliminate a word if the word clarifies and doesn't do anything to undermine or muck up the decision, muck up a provision in a charter.
So, so just to clarify for myself and, and members present. So when it comes back, a member would be able to make a motion to strike section X. The effective, if it was, if it passed, the effect of that would be to resurrect the existing language in charter.
Exactly right. So let
And, and let me just, so, and then at the end of the, I could probably ask this offline, I'm sorry. Then at the end of the series of amended, proposed amendments, would there be a vote on the charter as amended?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and, and thank you for asking these questions, Howard, because I think it's important for the council to understand it because it's an unusual methodology for a legislative body. I, and I appreciate that as a former local legislator myself. And so it's really important. And that's why the next phase, and we're not, if we use thirty days, guys, we're probably not going to get this on the ballot in November. So the commission's prepared to move pretty quickly to turn this around so that you can act on it in August and develop the questions for the ballot, which have to be submitted to the secretary of state. Noel has to submit those the first week in September. It is critical in the next phase, I said this at the beginning, but since the corp council raised the issue, I want to underscore it. And I'll underscore it as many times as I have to. We need to have total communication. Because we have a lot of new issues that weren't before the commission. I don't think they're complicated issues. Use the purchasing, the purchasing threshold is one example that are, are new, but not complicated. But we need to have communication. So the president needs to be involved, other leadership and the administration as we're going through this, so that the commission is not operating in the dark and the commission can come back with something that is meaningful and that will have support at the council when we bring it back to the council.
I'm done. I'm done counseling victim. Thank you for indulging.
Next time you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you all. And thank you, Attorney Mending. Some, some procedural questions. In terms of what we as a body send back to the commission to say, fix this, that comes from us, five of us voting to say, yes, we want you to fix this.
Correct.
When does that happen?
Next Monday.
And in order, in order, we just do that by motion. We just get together and any of it, it's not like an ordinary council meeting where we have to have submitted it by, I guess it'd be yesterday for Monday. Well, it's next Monday, but what are, do you follow me? Like, what are our rules?
So
Can I just walk in and just say things or should I write them down or how do we do it best?
We have the substitute resolution, which has been submitted. I think it's a placeholder. If staff can confirm that, I believe it's a placeholder on the agenda for next Monday and you would amend.
We still have not sent out that notice. We have a save the date. We have until Thursday to notice, to notice the meeting, but yes, that, that's what will happen. So our goal tonight is to have a motion where we refer back to console of this, this item from committee of the whole with no recommendation and have the discussions that we need to have with you, with mayor to be able to get your red line back, discuss it and that on Monday is what we will vote on to send back to the commission.
So tomorrow, councilman, I said this earlier, tomorrow So tomorrow, Councilman, I said this earlier, tomorrow I will update it to include everything that is on the list as of now. And on Monday, you will make the determination of what stays on the list and what is that, and you may add things to the list by amendment on Monday evening.
So in other words, if I want to add something, I mean, obviously subject to the vote of my colleagues, I just have to show up on Monday evening and be ready to articulate that. And ideally, I would circulate it in writing first, so it's easier for everyone.
Yeah, I would say that if you had something this evening, you might want to raise it so that I can include it on the document tomorrow.
Or send an email to Steve.
Right. Okay, that was my. Any which way will work.
If, if the president wants to be expansive, then send emails out. Let's, let's set a deadline tomorrow for emails that will come to me so I can get a, a, a list back to you. And then, and then that will be the list that you would discuss on Monday. And if there are things that the majority of the members do not want to send back, they can decide to do that. Some of my councils take an expansive view of the list, but keep in mind, there's a short time at this stage. We're not going to get the full thirty days if we want this on the ballot in November. So, but I know I talked to the chair today. He's prepared to roll up his sleeves and get this, get this done. So, so we could set up a time for tomorrow, maybe three o'clock as a definitive time. Is that okay, Madam President?
I encourage all my council colleagues. I mean, this process has been over a year. You know, the commission met several times, they invited council to participate. So I would strongly advise that any changes, concerns you have, please putting in, put it in writing before three P M. Tomorrow, share it with council. Obviously, send it to our Corporation Council, as FYI also, and to Steve. Our goal would be that on Monday, we have a red line version that we can send back to the commission. You know, I would hate that we have all this time and had all this time to prep for this charter revision and be on Monday on the floor making amendments to the red line.
If you could do it, if you could do two o'clock, that would be helpful. I've got something late in the afternoon. So two o'clock would be helpful to me, if that's all right, members of the council. I appreciate it.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. And remember tomorrow, we do have a caucus and then I will be speaking with, with the Hartford Party and the Working Party, you know, to, to kind of go over all the changes. But we will all have the same document from Steve to talk further, furthermore.
Another, thank you all, both for that. Another procedural question. If we send it back with whatever recommendations and it comes back to us, and as, as Howard referred to, and at that point, then we can, we can line item it, but we can't ask for more amendments or changes. We just kind of have to do that. If we vote it down at that point, what happens next? And we miss, maybe we miss our ballot deadline. I mean, what, how does that play out?
If you vote the whole charter down?
Yeah.
Then it's dead. It's gone. It's finished. I had that happen last year in one of my towns. It was a sneak attack vote. Everybody expected it to go through, but there was some political stuff going on. They killed the charter at the legislative body. So if you vote it down in, on August eighth, it's finished. Done.
And then do we just stick, we have the same charter for another? We convene another commission later?
Oh, yeah. You can convene. The ten years is a, is a stopgap. So that you, you, you don't go for more than ten years without looking at the charter. But if, if you have the appetite and the stomach to do it, you could do it next year.
Next year.
Yeah. God bless you. God bless you if you do, but that's okay. You can do that next year if you'd like. I'm doing that right now. The, the charter that failed in this other community is being, was literally voted out of the same, the, the new city council last night. They, they, they fixed it. And, well, there were no problems with the charter. It was politics. We, we just got through it. And, and so that, that, that was adopted last night by another council. So, yeah, you can vote it down and do another charter revision next year or two years from now, whatever.
Thanks. So I have now, and I had hoped to ask these questions of, of, of James Wolfe, because he was there at the first half of this, what is one committee of the whole meeting over two days. And he's not here now. So I guess because you were there, Attorney Mennick, you were there for all the deliberations. I'll ask you and you'll answer as, as best you can. These are more substantive questions. I'm just trying to get some, some insight into why the commission made certain choices that it made. And I mean, maybe you don't know, but in as much as there was discussion and you can help me out, that would be useful. So one is the question of districts. I know at our first, this first part of this meeting, Councilman Gale said that an expert spoke, or maybe more than one expert spoke to the commission. And what they said was that one of the best ways to increase voter participation and engagement is to go to a district system rather than a at-large system. And I also know that at least one member of the commission had talked to me about, and I presume talked to the commission about the idea of creating district, creating a system that would preserve minority representation. Not through state statute, but through our own charter. And so why, if those things would increase participation, then then folks not go for them? Was there any discussion about like, actually, we don't want that much participation? Or like, how did that go?
Well, we had three different meetings. I put together three different panels for the commission on a variety of items related to the legislature, legislative body. And we had professors from Brown University and Northwestern University as part of our Board of Education review that talked about participatory democracy and how to expand participatory democracy. And thought we were in a place where we had a lot of due diligence. We had one panel specifically addressing the issue of composition of councils. We had people representing hybrids, like a Hampden, which is a part, district, part at-large, Waterbury, which is a district system, a new district system. And I, I remember doing charter for Waterbury and Hartford simultaneously when you were both at large. And I never would have predicted that Waterbury would go to a district system before Hartford did, but they did. And they went to district system that is kind of a mini minority party representation system. They have three per district and they have NPR in each of the districts to ensure that majority party. It, it, it's a misnomer. It's, it's a cap on majority representation is what it is. And, and so Waterbury did that. We had Danbury, I believe, at here. So we had a wide variety. We had New Haven, which is a thirty ward system. So we had every kind of system that you have in the state of Connecticut represented. And then there was no action. So raised the question multiple times and there was just never, it was never scheduled for any kind of action. And so I think you'd have to talk to the members about why that occurred. Whether there was no interest on the part of the, of your colleagues for it. I don't know the answer definitively, but we never took any acts. Commission never took any action. It was never scheduled. There was never a vote not to proceed. It just never came up again.
For it to have been scheduled, how many votes, like who makes sure that it, who can make it get scheduled within the rules of the charter?
Well, the, there, there, there were no real rules, guidelines for the charter. The chair addressed the, the scheduling and, and the agenda. But members of the body under Robert's rules could always amend an agenda. So there was never any effort to amend any agendas on that issue. And so that, there, there was literally no history at the commission as to why that issue ultimately did not get addressed. There might have been some chance discussions, but there was no formal, formal decision by the commission not to move forward on that issue.
Got you. Same question. What about police, police, police commissioners? Did that come up?
Yeah, we had a, again, we had a very substantial panel discussion that had different communities with different models. And, and then language was proposed that is similar to the language that is in the doc, not similar, identical to the language that's in the proposed charter right now that was raised on the agenda and that was voted upon by the remaining commissioners at the later stages of the charter revision. There was no, you know, we had a number of members who, who left and did not return, some of whom were big advocates for this area of, of concern. But the language that's in the charter was the language that was considered. There was no, beyond that, there was no, no other discussion. There was a pretty robust discussion during the panel, the meeting with the panel on, on Police Commission, but beyond that, it was just a brief discussion on the item that was approved that's in the charter.
Thank you. And, and I want to be clear that I'm not, these questions are not meant to suggest that you didn't give the commission lots of information to chew on. I'm just trying to understand the commission members' thinking process.
Yeah, and I.
Having digested.
Yeah, and I don't want to presume to speak for them. I, I'm just trying to give you the observation.
Yeah, understood.
I put together the programs and it's up to them, and it was up to you guys on the council to also pressure on if there was, if there, you know, it seems to me that if there was a real desire to have districts, that would have come from the distinguished group of people that I'm looking at today. And, and again, I had very little contact with anybody on the political side in this particular charter. And so those are the outcomes.
Got you. So a question about that police commission vote, because I know, you know, I wasn't there, but I understand.
Councilman Mitchum, just because you have three more, three questions already.
I can see to somebody else, yes.
And then we'll come back to you, okay? Councilman. Councilman Clark, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Quick question procedurally as to what we actually want to see. That's not already listed. So it's just a simple email to include additional items that we want to see. Did I hear that correct?
Madam President, I think he was asking you, Madam President, or.
I'm sorry. I thought you were addressing Steve.
I'll be having to answer it, yeah.
Can you repeat the question again, please?
So for items particular, particular to the items that we would like to see that was not submitted to us.
Yeah. So what, what will happen is we have a deadline. And I know that you told me you were joining us a little bit later on, but our goal is, I don't know if you read, had the chance to read what Mayor sent over today with some of his recommendations.
Yes, I did. Yes.
Okay. So that is going back to Steve and any other concerns that council has. We're requesting that by two P M. Tomorrow. You make those requests. You see everyone on council and send it to Steve Mednick.
And that'll be it. So for example.
Yes. And then he will, let, let me finish. He will send us an updated red line version with everyone's concerns and changes on there. Because tomorrow the Dems will caucus and then we will speak to the Hartford Party and the, and the Working Party to make sure that in our special meeting on Monday, everyone's on board. And so that we successfully send back the updated red line version that we get from Steve tomorrow by. Steve, the deadline is for us to get Steve. Our comments and Steve, what's, what's your projected timeline that you're getting back?
Please get it done by two o'clock. I'm going to work on it. Get it to me in the morning if you can. I'm going to work on it. I've got something in the afternoon that I've got to deal with that's pre-scheduled. So if you can get them to me by two o'clock, not everybody, please try to get them earlier. That would be the absolute drop dead time. Now, the, the, I will point out that you could always bring things up on the floor on Monday, but it'll be nice.
But our goal, our goal is, is to not really.
My, my, my goal is to have a list. For example, last night, the Hampden Legislative Body approved the list that we were developing throughout this process with very little debate on, at their last meeting. So it was pretty, it went pretty, pretty easy. So if you can get me the list, that would be enormously helpful. The earlier, the better.
All right. So I, I'm just trying to really kind of be clear for my own understanding. So let's say, for example, and I'm just being facetious, that crossing guards should be its own department. And that's what I can just send to Attorney Metnick and everybody else that I want to see that change be in, be incorporated within the recommended amendment to the charter.
We would, wouldn't be that granular, but that, that's, that's a very good facetious concept. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask a clarifying related to that effect? So in other, we don't have to have the perfect language. We just have to give you the concept and you all will make the language.
Yeah, no, that's exactly right. You are not answering questions here. You're raising questions with us. So that what the majority leader's question would probably be, we'd like the commission to review the issue of the administrative behavior, the administrative placement of crossing guards. Not give us a definitive answer. It should be a department. The president brought up a request that one of the other council members wanted to make. We'd like the commission to take a look at council districts, if that's what somebody wants us to do.
Yes. And, and for the record, Councilwoman Surgeon did authorize me to, to speak on those two items. As I mentioned, Steve, she would like more input on, on, on the districts. And also on the Corporation Council.
Residency.
Residency, correct. Okay. Councilman Clark, are you all set?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you. Corporation Council?
Thank you, Council President. I, I just had a clar, I wanted a level set for people what you should expect to see in the form of a resolution. I don't believe, and I think we were just getting there, that you're going to see proposed language. That would be a red line version of what you receive from the commission. But rather a list of items that you want the Charter Commission to review and weigh in on. And then send back to the council its recommendations for consideration by the council. That's number one. I think that, I think that's right.
Can I, yeah, I think Howard's right. I want to, I, I'm glad he's making that point. I am updating the recommendation resolution. I will not be updating the charter. I've given you kind of an update of the errata items that Howard has provided me and that John Gale has raised and I've raised. I'm not going to update that document before Monday, because I don't know what's going to be in there and what's not going to be in there. I'm looking right now for broad ideas. And what I will update for Monday is I'll show you, I will plot on a map the recommendations. So recommendation number fourteen will be in article such and such. You'll see the chapter that's affected by your recommendation, but there will be no language. It will simply be the recommendation.
So the, so that's one clarification. The second is, Steve, how are you going to deal with the technical revisions that are necessary? Are you going to put that in the resolution? Or how is that going?
They are in the body of the document, the technical ones, which I just pointed out. And, and I will send you what I've been sending to the council. I'm not sure you, have you received? Okay, I will send you tomorrow. When I expand this list, I will send to, to the Corporation Council, the list I've been sending to the council. He will, he will recognize many of the changes because they're mainly changes that came from him and John Gale. So where there are technical changes, they will be reflected in the document so that you know that those are what we mean by those changes. Where there are broad, substantial policy issues, we're not addressing it. There's no way. I can't speculate on what you're thinking and what the commission is thinking, but on the specific fixes, they.
That would be in elements of the resolution.
Correct.
Also will consider and take up on Monday.
Yeah. And what you'll notice is a lot of Howard's changes and my changes that are erratas or corrections will have a number that's assigned to erratas and corrections. They're not going to get separate numbers. They're going to be listed in the resolution, not individually for the most part. Some of them will be where they're more substantial. But where we're just doing erratas, they will, they will get an assignment of the errata number, which is the last number on the recommendation list. I don't know what that number is at this point.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Nickstam, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Madam President. Coming back to that, that time when the folks, a number of folks walked out, number of commissioners, I should say. I guess, like, that's not, walking out is, was that happening in person or was that like a? Um, I guess, like, that's not, that, walking out is, was that happening in person, or was that like a, a, a virtual walking out? This was never clear to me, did that happen at a live meeting, or?
Oliver, you're putting me in a difficult position, all of our meetings um, were virtual.
Okay.
So that's, walk, walking out is probably in the proper term.
It's just clicking.
Doesn't apply, yeah. And, 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 and I think, I don't think anybody left the meeting, I, I, I think no one returned to the next meeting is what, what happened. To my knowledge.
Right, and so.
On recollection.
My understanding, and again, I wasn't there, and this is all like second and third hand, was that there was a vote at that meeting on police commissioners.
I'd have to go back and look at it, it's, it's, it's logical that there was it is logical that there was uh, that night, I don't remember definitively, I, I, I'd be happy to look at it and give you an answer uh, tomorrow, I'll look at the, but I think you may be right on that.
I, i- if I may, Councilman Mitchum, and something that you might want to do if you want any of those answers is to just reach out personally to the chair, um, James Wolfe, and just ask him directly. Um, and that way you can get it from the chair, which is uh, you know, he was responsible for running the meeting and the agenda, and he can give you that kind of clarification.
Right, I had hoped, I had expected him to be here, which is why I waited on these questions.
Yeah, today he could not be here with us, we needed to keep the motion of um, of the meetings going forward, since um, our goal is, is to meet that deadline.
Right, okay.
But if you have any, if you have any concerns with the police commission, you know, that's something that you can put in writing and ask, ask uh, the commission to look over again.
Uh, and I will, right, I'm just trying to understand a little bit about where maybe the process broke, at least led to some conflict, I don't want to say broke down, but led to some conflict, and because the person I have here who was there is Attorney Metnick, I'm just trying to get clarity on that. And I, I won't, I won't belabor the thing, I promise, I'm almost done. Uh, but my, my understanding was that there was a a vote on the police commission that was scheduled maybe on short notice or last minute, or in a way where not as many people were there who would have wanted to vote on it? Is that like, is that your understanding of what was the breakdown?
I, I don't recall what the breakdown was, I do know that one member of the commission who is a very strong supporter of police reform, actually somebody I've actually used on panels in other communities, was not able to come to the meeting that night. Uh, but beyond that, I don't know whether there was a dialogue with between members. Um, as I say, um, I'm usually much more involved in um, structuring uh, the meetings.
Right.
Um, than I have been in this particular charter commission, but um, I can't get into what was in everybody's mind.
Right, no, I'm only talking about what you might have seen.
That one.
But if I must say, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, um, Attorney Metnick, is that you can, or my office can send you um, the links that are uploaded on YouTube for every charter revision meeting, and that way you don't have to hear it from anyone, you can just do it yourself and get your own personal opinion of what happened. Uh, you know, that's our democracy, right? Even if we have our, even when we have our council meetings and, and, and you've brought up issues, right, you've made motions, uh, because you want X, Y, Z change, you've made your resolutions, and then you take a vote, right? Um, and if, if you want your votes to pass, you lobby individuals, and then you have the process. For my take on this, right, um, there were people who they were voted out when it came, when it came to voting for a, a police commission, but I'm not going to speak for, for anyone. Um, when the vote uh, was taken, the vote wasn't there to support it. Um, but I, I'm more than happy to send you all those links for the meeting so that you can.
I have, I have the links, I, I'm more trying, because here we are in a public meeting, and I, I don't expect our constituents to have the time to wade through those meetings, I mean, honestly, God bless them if they sit through this one. But I'm just trying to see if I can get a little encapsulation of what happened that's a little easier to digest. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Steve, I'm just trying to, you know, figure it out, you see what I'm saying?
No, I appreciate it, I, I don't feel like I'm on the spot, thank you, Councilman.
But after that time, the folks who remained, they never revisited the police commissioner question, that was done.
When the, when the vote was taken on the document, the language you see in the document, that was the last vote there was on the police wasn't police commission on police-related issues.
Right. Well, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any other comments or questions before the chair entertain a motion from any council member? Corporation Council? Councilman Sanchez?
Uh, yeah, I, I would like to make a motion, if, if that's okay with you right now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to send, uh, I'd like to make a motion to send this item of the charter revision to council with no recommendation.
And I'll second that, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rosetti. Um, we have a motion on the floor to send back this uh, charter revision uh, back to council with no recommendation. Um, are any other discussions? Councilman Mitchum?
Just to clarify, when we say this item, we, we understand that this will actually be something that includes stuff that we're going to send to Steve tomorrow, just.
Correct, correct, we're just moving the item out of committee of the whole with no recommendation.
Got you, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman, um. Everyone signifying by saying aye, um, if you approve of this motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Guys have it, this motion has been sent back to the council body with uh, no recommendations. I want to thank you, everyone, um, for, for your time and members of the public for being with us, Corporation Council, Attorney Steve Mednick, um, our uh, town clerks, members of Hartford Public Access, and my office, uh, Mr. Adam Murphy. With that, uh, thank you, everyone, and have a nice evening.
Night.
Good night.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.